Okay, good evening, everybody. It's sick 10. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Again, I'd like to apologize for technical difficulties being able to get into the Zoom tonight. So I thank you for your patience. At this moment, we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have approval of non-public and public meeting minutes from August 25th of 2020.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the public and non-public minutes of August 25th, 2020.
Thank you, Tim. Do I have a second? Bridgette LeBrie for the second. Any comments? Any questions? Corrections? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of the motion to accept both public and non-public meeting minutes of August 25th of 2020 as presented, signified by saying aye. Abstentions? And passes, 6-0. Just a note, Kathleen Stacey is excused from tonight's meeting. She had an emergency. Is Dr. Buffet with us tonight? Yes. Okay, so Dr. Buffet, you're going to give a COVID-19 regional update, I believe, and you, we have something included in our pocket as well.
Very good. There was some differences noted in some of the previous outlines from that. Those change from day to day, so it's a snapshot that you're getting. I did try to include the other communities that are, that the sports teams are competing with. Those are also going to be available on the state schools dashboard, which will can provide some more detailed basis on a frequent basis if desired. So far, you know, as you can see, minimal cases in the region, luckily, and we're going, you know, look to expect some increase, hopefully modest, as schools reopen and the colleges in the area resume operation. Hopefully, the continuing preventative measures that we've implemented will prevent that from becoming so problematic that other more drastic measures need to be implemented. If there are issues regarding the format or the content, I'm happy to hear from that. This is very early, and we can, we can make adjustments in that as desired. The differences between communities are so small as to be statistically meaningless, probably, and overall, very few cases. So get back to me through Amanda if, if there's any additions, or if there's, you know, if you want a simpler format, that can be done, too.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board for Dr. Buffet? Tim Drosen?
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Buffet, for putting this together. Thanks for including the competing schools for, who we're playing against in athletics. I think that's handy to kind of keep an eye on. So thank you very much. This is very easy to read, and it's great. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Danielle Thompson?
Hi, I echo what Tim has mentioned.
You are echoing.
Oh, I'm very much echoing. Excellent. Great. I wonder if it's that thing? Even though it didn't say it would not pair with my, with my computer? Okay, good. One thing that I wanted to mention is that we'll also share the excellent sort of feedback we're getting here. We'll share a story from the, from the Children's Hospital at Dartmouth, and some of their experts related to some of the pediatric and epidemiology experts, and some of their back-to-school expertise that they have, they posted on the site. So yeah, I think it's got to be the one here in the building. Excellent. Okay, we'll try that again. There's a story on the Chad website that we'll share that has some specific guidance in a Q and A from our pediatricians and epidemiologists that I think some parents will find, will find helpful. So we'll, we'll share that on the district Facebook page.
Is there any other questions for Dr. Buffet? Thank you, Dr. Buffet, for that information. It's very helpful, including the schools, as we had asked two weeks ago. Thank you again, so.
Hearing no further questions, I'm going to get back to the primary election that I've been helping with as well. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have public comment. I'll open the public comment to anyone in the auditorium first. And if you have anything you would like to comment or questions, the mic is up in the back. You have to go back over there and state your name and the town you're from. Okay, seeing none, I will open it up now to the participants. And just use the hand thing, and we'll try and Dan? Dan, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. I believe our guiding beliefs were that safety's first. The safety of our students, faculty, staff, and families is our first priority. And going to the fiscal committee, I think we're real good in listening to the new director of facilities. I think he's doing a great job in, in the school. My issue is going to be football. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, and I've, I've said it to a couple people already, football is basically 50 mosh pits over a two-hour period. And I think there's a big issue there. And for you people who probably weren't home at 5:30, WMUR just had a story that Wyndham High School has basically canceled all practices and tryouts because a number of athletes have come up positive. And this is just the first week of school. I think that we really have to rethink football for a couple of reasons. First of all, the players don't have masks. And those same players, along with the visiting teams, are going to be back, going back into the schools come Monday morning. So I just think we need to rethink this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate the comments. Anyone else? I'll go through the list and see. I don't see anyone, anyone see anybody. Okay. Oh, Jenova?
I do. I'm just responding to the comments that were just made. I caught some of that article, and I don't believe it was football-specific. I didn't see football mentioned in it. It was fall sports in general. It wasn't that they were specifically talking about football. Also, football players can wear shields. That is an option that can be explored if necessary. The article that I read was concerns with the line, not the entire football team with being a mosh pit, and putting face shields on those helmets would not be that much, that difficult or that much of a challenge. So just kind of speaking up for football in general, that all of the athletes have been taking a ton of precautions, and so has the school, and so is their parent. So I would not like to see football just singled out, I guess, in that before people would decide to just cut the sport. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we'll continue with the agenda, continuing business. Finance and Facilities Meeting on the September 2nd. We had a meeting here at the high school. Carrato gave his report in regards to projects that have been completed, both CES, EVS. Both gym floors have been refinished and completed at the high school and Enfield Village School. All staff have been given individual food-safe disinfectant sprays for their rooms. He stated that there was a PPE training also that particular day we were meeting. All schools have been given the traffic padding decals for the hallways. Carrato said he's working with staff and principals to remove excess furniture from rooms and helping to locate furniture move for cleaning before school starts. We went on to continue with the discussion and review of the cleaning and the disinfecting process, and stated that besides the regular cleaning process, that it would be a three-hour process to disinfect each room every night. He said he's still waiting on supplies that are on back order, which is obvious to mostly everywhere right now. But he does have enough to start school, and we have. He said demand, demand is high for many items needed, and he's working with his connections to find an alternate supplier for some of these items. He's hoping to be caught up on the back orders between October and November. Deb had talked about FEMA, and FEMA is for PPE, not for the cleaning supplies. And so it's been a little confusion there with the federal government is probably going to be, end up paying and reimbursing us. I had asked a question about cafe services. Who's responsible for the kitchen? And cafe services has their own cleaning and disinfecting crew that come in, and they take care of that process as needed. And Carrato is also right on top of that to make sure things are done. He stated that there is two disinfectants that we will be using. One is a food-safe disinfectant to be used at night in the classrooms where students will be eating. And the second one is for the general population to be able to spray, like in the hallways and so forth. We had a problem with a freezer condenser at EVS. The condenser and the evaporator had to be replaced, well, it needs to be replaced. And Deb is going to be coming to us tonight in regards to that, so we'll have more information on that in a little bit. Carrato said he would like to be more proactive with the equipment so he could possibly get better pricing and availability, which means even with our CIP and some of our other bigger pieces of equipment that should be on a life cycle, he wants to look at that a little bit more in depth so we can get kind of ahead of that, so we don't end up with these large bills such as what we're going to have. After-school activities was discussed. Students leaving the building. They are not allowed back in the building after practice or games. Finance audit. Deb stated that her staff is moving along with the audit, but it's a little behind. There's been a lot going on, so some of the things got a little to the wayside. Budget. Deb says she's concerned about money spent delivering the meals throughout the summer. She said it was spent about $50,000 during July and August, and $25,000 is incumbent for other supplies needed because of COVID-19. Homeland Security. Is that right, Deb? Homeland Security? Was the email that you had gotten was from Homeland Security? Yes, okay. Stating that they are waiting for guidance for the future reimbursements. So Deb is right on top of it, so as soon as we can get it, we'll be getting it. I'm sure I can guarantee that. Capital Improvement Plan. Deb stated she has not talked to Carrato about the CIP with everything going on, getting schools started and everything. It's just something that's just going to have to work itself into. The Budget Committee. She stated that she has the Budget Committee letter ready to email, including the school board packet for us to see here. And the organizational meeting is scheduled for September the 14th. Contracted Services. Deb says we're plugging along and that we are working on the plan for next week, which is the week before school started. We officially weren't supposed to be delivering any of those meals, but there was a waiver put in place for us to be able to do that. There are 160 remote students, and she thinks that they can all be delivered with district vehicles. This is now for the school year. The waiver that she was talking about is now everyone is going to be free as far as the meals until December 31st, as it stands right now. And families will have to opt out if they do not want to receive the meals. They have to opt out. Instead of vice versa, we would have people sign up. Now, because we had such a big number of people that wanted the meals, it's now an opt-out option. Under Transportation, bus drivers are showing up daily, and they have a plan for Tuesday. Students should have signed up for riding the bus. Lists have been turned into Butler Bus, so they can figure out the ridership. Some bus routes will need to be reviewed because it can only be 26 to 27 students on each bus to socially distance properly. Circle, she says she may need to circle back for a second drop-off, and that has to be creative and try to keep everyone safe. A discussion about parents dropping off students in potential traffic issues was discussed. Manita stated they have extended the timeline for students to be marked as tardy. Drop-off is 7:30 a.m. to 8:10 at all schools now. Driver education classes started for the fall. Having a teacher in school teaching should help with the backlog of students from the summer and the fall program wanting to take the class. Deb also stated that she's not comfortable increasing the cost of the class right now, and that was unanimous among the members of the committee. I sign manifests, and I've had no concerns with them. We'll hope it's going to be coming in to do some signing as well. We also added a golf cart lease to the school board agenda. That's up. It's already been five years, and I don't know where all that time's gone. So the initial lease price five years ago was $125 a month, and now it'll be $180 a month for a five-year lease. And the buyout on the current lease would be $4,000. We had some public comment, no policies, and our next meeting is October the 7th here in the auditorium at 1:00 p.m. Questions? Kim?
First of all, I want to say thank you to Carrato for all of the stuff that he's done to get these buildings ready. Again, I can tell just like little things around the campus, and it's, it's really cool to see, so thank you to him. Because that's no easy task to start your year here like this, as in a brand-new building, you know. But then the other question I had is unrelated to this, but I know a few months back we had talked about Verizon possibly wanting to put a tower on some of our land. Has that come up at all recently? Probably not. All right. Just curious.
Yeah, I was very stupid. No, it's kind of fell by the wayside right now, and so.
I have not heard from, I did not hear back from them. And I also did not hear back from Norwich Solar, so.
That was my next question about solar, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? It's a busy time. It's nice knowing that everyone's working together and keeping things going. Okay, Co-Curricular Activities Committee of September the 3rd. Is that Bridgette?
All right, so we had a quick discussion about the Mascoma Youth Sports League. They had approached the schools about helping out. Katie Jopek is going to be stepping down from that position, but it sounds like they have lots of parent and community help stepping in. So I think they're kind of working on regrouping. There was public comment, which was also discussed here, and that was a question about attendance, especially at sports. And we did also have a brief discussion carrying on to what we talked about, I think, previous meeting work that we were doing. We'd like to get a little more feedback from our clubs and organizations that are happening. So we're working on a form that can start going out to clubs and advisors of those clubs, just so that we can hear a little bit of feedback, what are they doing, how active they are, and just kind of stay a little more involved in that. And at the next meeting, we're going to talk to the Student Athletics Leadership Team, the SALT group, and get some updates on that, as well as just discuss the activity update form and see how things are going, especially with COVID happening. If the groups are meeting and just what the changes have kind of looked like, so. We will meet again in November.
Okay, any questions for Bridgette? Nope. Seeing none, we'll move on. Superintendent's Report. Hello, Amanda.
Hello. So you do have my written report in your packet in that I do talk a little bit about the fact that on Wednesday and Thursday of last week, we, Deb, Carrato, and I, along with the building principals, walked through each and every single classroom in the district to make sure that we are, we're adhering to the six-foot distance, that people were moving along, that we would be ready to go, and we were pleasantly surprised with the progression of the classrooms. Most, if not all, am I still on? Okay. Most, if not all, were in perfect condition, had adequate seating, adequate social distancing. Very, very pleased with what our teachers had accomplished in the last seven days. My ask of the board is that we do need to start to work on some policy updates again. If you are interested in collaborating on policy stuff, I think this time we will do it via a Google Doc, where you can put in some comments. So what I would do is have the school board, our current policy, as well as the new updated New Hampshire School Board Association policy, have both of those sent out to you, and then allow people to comment on those. I think we should limit that to the first three members that volunteer to be on that committee. So if you're interested in doing that, let me know, or subcommittee, I should call it. Really, it's a work group, so we would not need to post anything about a meeting, but I just would like some input from the board before we start to bring it. Very similar to the work group that was constructed last year. We met in person at the SAU office, but this, instead, this time doing a work group virtually with a Google Doc. And then I wanted to thank the principals here in the district for the lovely reports that they put together. In hindsight, I should not have asked for my principals to write an opening day report on opening day. That was a huge ask. They did a great job. They got everything in and through with some very nice reports that they will present to you. But it is a long day, and I remember as my days at a principal, you're, you're very excited about the day. You're really concerned and focused on the kids. And especially at our elementary level where we only have the principals, no assistant principal there, that they really can't take time out of their day to write this. So I know that Mr. Little and Mrs. Whelan were writing this at 3:15, 3:30, and piecing it together for me, so I greatly appreciate that. And finally, I will say that I did walk through all four schools today, and I saw a lot of joy and a lot of happiness. Now, I can't guarantee that every student was thrilled, or every teacher was thrilled, but there overall was a lot of joy and a lot of happiness. Kids were wearing masks, respectful of distancing. They did a very, very good job, and I, I am very pleased that the teachers also embraced it. They did a very, very nice job, making kids feel comfortable, welcomed, and cared for. So I am very, very pleased to report that to the board tonight.
Thank you, Amanda. Do we have any questions for Amanda? And I will have to say, all the kids were wearing their mask on the buses. They were very, very good about doing that. And I will, when Kevin does his report, I would like to kudos to him for the dismissal. It was very smooth. The students came up to the bus. You ask questions, where you going, you know, where you live. And it was a very smooth transition, so that was, that was very helpful today. Okay, so looking at the Business Administrator's Report. Hello, Deb.
Bookie. So I did want to mention that we do have a waiver to continue, continue the Seamless Summer Option Program for meals through December 31st or when the funding runs out. So we have let parents know that, yes, it's free right now, but please fill out your free and reduced forms anyway, so that it's all in set, all in place when that funding runs out. The free and reduce applications also affect a lot of our other funding, like Title I. So it's really something that we need to have happen regardless of when we start actually having paid meals again. What we're doing with remote students is, we have about 182 students that are remote. So we sent out a survey, Pauline McIntyre, who is in charge of the remote learning, sent out a survey last week so that parents could sign up for meals for their kids. So right now, we have about 61. So I think we can do that with two district vehicles. Half of the kids are in Enfield, and then the other half are kind of all over. So that route will be a lot of fun. And we are moving forward with, with the audit, so we're, we're in pretty, pretty good shape right now. I don't feel like I'm terribly behind other years. It just feels that way, I guess. I did want to say that the Homeland Security Emergency Management Fund is through FEMA, so they're very much connected. And I emailed my contact there today, and they received further guidance that they're trying to figure out at the state level what will be covered. So I'm still hopeful that our meal delivery costs for the summer will be covered. The worst-case scenario is the Food Service Fund does have $30,000 in that fund, but the meal delivery would pretty much wipe that out if, if I need to indeed use it for that. I think that's all I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Any questions for Deb? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Educational Funding in New Hampshire. Tim?
I have a small update. If you look in your emails, there was something sent to us from the New Hampshire School Board Association in talking about a survey about school funding, so if you have time, please go fill that out. As far as I know, the case that we are signed on to as an amicus brief is slated to be heard in November, or late October, I'm sorry, late October. So we should get some motion on that soon, so.
Thank you, Tim. Public Comment Response Update. I think we're pretty caught up on all of that. We've had quite a few different angles going, but it seems like the communication piece is moving along great for people. Hope?
I just wanted to point out with the survey that it's open to anyone. Yeah, and that it really behooves everyone to get on there and put your two cents in. So I don't know if we wanted to get that up on the website, or.
Okay.
And the deadline was extended to the 14th.
Okay. Thank you, Hope. So any other public comment, response, questions? And now we have a sports update. I believe it will be with our athletic director, Rodney Brown. And I think we have And I think we have some information in our packet in regards to this. Good evening, Rodney.
How are we doing?
You tell us, Rodney.
Rodney?
Yes.
I have your slideshow presentation if you want to show it and talk over the top of it, or people could just look at it on their computers.
That'd be amazing if you could do that.
Yeah.
So things, you know, we, since I last talked to you guys, when we, we approved sports, that was back when, I believe, we were one of the first, you know, school districts to say yes. So there's definitely some good updates on where we are, where we've progressed. And, you know, we've, we've got to the point that we have had our first practices and tryouts today. So when we get that presentation up, I'll clue you guys in. And I did share some information with you guys as well to follow along. Again, feel free to ask me any questions. I'm sure there's a lot here to unpack. So yeah, we'll get started there. So Kamal, if you want to just share that out, you know, we'll get started. All right, you can move to the next slide. So we have officially moved to the NHIA Phase III. Up until then, our student athletes were going through summer programming and following the social distancing guidelines of the NHIA and the Return to Sports Governors' documents, which had a lot of, you know, social distancing, as everything does, but also a lot of non-contact. This phase incorporates the start of contact. As we've moved into our practices and my trainings with my coaching staff, and I'll go into a little bit more into detail, but a lot of it has been based on going off those guidelines and letting our coaches know to gradually build up to contact and to only limit that for a couple of times a week when we do said, said things. So again, this is, this goes into like with football, you know, and are also moderate to high-risk sports and field hockey, soccer, and even spirit. So, you know, having a fall coaches meeting with my coaches to break this all down, and then actually having individual meetings leading up to today's start on having any questions and trainings on that. As we're going in, you know, it does break down all the skill, you know, all the risk levels, I should say, those haven't changed. We have followed the NFHS guidelines as well, which was in the previous presentation of all the considerations which we are following. That Excel sheet that I had shared with you that has it per sport, that's a breakdown of the NHIAA Phase III and the, the NFHS guidelines as well, per sport. So that's what each sport is going to look like when it comes to practices, as well as competitions. So we've broken that down by sport. You know, something as simple as sideline cheer, it's not actually competitive spirit. You know, unfortunately, our girls in their first varsity season are not going to be able to stunt, but they're, they are going to be able to at a distance cheer with signs, you know, and some, we're going to get a little creative on what the signage is to do some great reminding of our social distancing. You're not having the breakthrough thing that our teams go through, the breakthrough, the breakthrough sign, but also having like a social distance tunnel for that to happen. But I'm getting a little creative on how we go about running practices and how, what sports look like. As I said, since I last talked to you, we've done a lot of training, myself, as well as coaches, parents, and students. We've had some great Zoom meetings. As I had talked about, we talked about our coaches' meetings. We're really, you know, again, done remotely, presented a lot of information on what that looked like. Those trainings included a free, a free COVID certification that's on our NFHS, NFHS website. And all of my coaches have done that for the fall, so they are in tune with that. And that training is pretty cut and dry. It's, it's a lot of what we're following right now, but it's, it's just another thing that we can say that our, you know, our, our coaches have been trained along with the CPR, the heat, you know, the heat illness, and as well as the concussion. So it's just another layer that we can add. It's not something that's required by the NHIA, but it's something that was strongly encouraged. So that was something that I believe we all improved on and, and moved forward with that. So, you know, you know, and that's something that we moved forward with our Fall Information Night that was also done on Zoom. And we went through what everything was going to look like, what, you know, mitigation strategies we were going to put in, what practices would look like, what games look like. And, and now we're building into, I know a few of my teams have actually had team meetings. I know this, this evening, girl soccer is having a meeting after practice socially distanced. And I believe that boy soccer is having theirs as well at the end of this week as well. So it's just, again, a lot of ways to just continue to reinforce all the new stuff, you know, because it is, it, you know, I would, there's been a lot of, you know, just answering the same questions over and over again, but that's, that's where we're at right now. And I don't mind answering the same questions over and over again, as long as it keeps us safe and, you know, keeping us going, going forward with sports. Our compliance officers, that, you know, includes myself, admin on duty, any medical personnel that we have. Our trainer's position has been posted again, our part-time position, so that has been posted. There have been some interest, just hoping to have some, you know, get some, some bites there, you know, going forward. But until then, Canaan Rescue is working with us to have medical personnel at games, so we will have that in place. But the compliance officer is, is, you know, I've, I've tasked my coaching staffs to have somebody, you know, be bad cop. You know, and say, hey, you know, you gotta, you're not socially distant, put on a mask. And, you know, we have some great leaders in our classrooms, you know, in our fields. And, you know, this, you know, kids are going to be socially responsible. And if we're allowed to have this season, is a lot to do with what they do on the sidelines, by putting on their mask, by fixing it every now and again, like, you know, my big nose here, you know, getting that up and down. So constantly reminding them to get the, you know, get the PPE on the right, you know, places. Kind of going on that as well. I believe I do talk about it a little bit in further in my presentation, but we do have masks ordered. They actually, in my office, they came this afternoon that are screened with the Mascoma logo. So all of our coaches and athletes will, will get one, as well as the, the masks that they, they are bringing from home. So it'll be nice to have some Mascoma purple, you know, with their, with their uniforms. It might be a cool, you know, face covering that they could wear during competitions. The screening and tracking is happened, is continuing to happen here. Again, I witnessed all of them today. Every, our, our coaches have COVID kits. They have their med kits. They have their hand sanitizer. They have their touchless thermometers, and they also have the documentation of the questions, you know, going through the gamut on that as well. So it was nice to see that. Some of our teams that are a little bit bigger, we did give a few more thermometers to help expedite that. So again, good so far on that. Yeah, we talked about face coverings. The face covering thing is actually something that I'm going to bring up a little bit further. But, you know, it's just the, the whole thing based on the considerations of the NHIA and the Federation state, and just want to be clear on it, is that face coverings are to be worn at any time. They, they can wear them at any time. It's permissible, the wording is. So they can wear them when they're competing. They can wear them when they're socially distanced. But they're also, when they're playing, they're able to take them off. That's the only time that they should be able to take them off is when socially distance can't be attained or when they're competing. There had been some confusion on what that looked like, but, you know, it's just another thing that's to say that, all right, when you're out there in the 85 degrees, you can take off the mask when you're, when you're running around. As soon as you get on the sideline, it's got to be put back on. Or when you're having a team meeting, it's got to be put back on. So it's the same thing when we go on buses. They are required to wear them at all times. You know, windows are going to be cracked, and we're going to follow the, the limitations on how many people can get on the bus. That goes into my next, next bullet point about the requirements from the NHIA. They, till they were blue in the face, said that they were going to be flexible, and they have been. The amount of games that we're playing is very condensed. I did share with you what our finalized regional schedule looks like. We are playing a lot, let's see, I believe it's on my next one here, so I'll just go to the next slide on that, Kamal. So as we said here, kind of give you a little update, I'm getting a little ahead of myself. We remained in Phase II until the official start of sports season, which was today. When I put this presentation together on Sunday morning, we were at 120. We are at 130 kids signed up for sports right now, which is on par with what we did last year. Pretty incredible numbers with the current state we're in, and it also just justifies the amount of need for this social interaction, these, these activities in our community. We're right on par with, I believe we were around 135 people signed up last year. Again, we did talk about it as well. COVID kits, the comprehensive checklist, which I shared with you, with, you know, more in detail, and then also the face covering mandate. I am sharing with you the Division III mandate that we have there as well that goes over what we expect when our spectators are, you know, the, the teams that we are hosting to come here. We are following the government, the governor's orders that when, you know, we have 100 people here, we are to wear masks. So with our division, the assumption is that all of our sports will in fact have that. So we are requiring masks for all spectators when they come to the games. We do have some things made up, some signage, Fast Lane Graphics. Shout out to them for all the great work they've done in the school. But we have some great masks. We have some great socially distanced. Yeah, we have some yard sale signs we're going to get out there, as well as a really giant banner as well that's going to go on our, on our backstop that actually reminds people to be wearing masks into socially distance. It's in Mascoma colors, per request of Amanda, getting more purple out there. So, you know, we'll have that stuff out there as well. Going on about the regional focus schedule, guys. It's a regional cohort. We are playing Stevens, Fall Mountain, Newport, Kearsarge, Lebanon, Hanover, Newfoundland, Sunapee. And we play, we play a school a week. So the first weekend, we see Stevens, and we'll play a game against each one of them. And then that next week, we will work on playing, I believe it's Newport. And then we'll play Newport in all the sports. There are a few outliers there where Newport doesn't have volleyball. So we were able to, I believe, pick up a game with Lebanon a little bit early in the season, but that's the only team they play all, all week. So we made sure to keep the contact tracing at a minimum when it came to, you know, who, who they were playing. And that was a lot of the reason why we went with the cohort the way it is. So we're going to do a home and home with each team, and it's going to be pretty exciting because we're going to get to see some teams that are just right down the road from us. And it, it really helps minimize the amount of time our kids are going to be on the bus as well, you know, socially distancing and with masks on. So I think the longest trip we have is to go to Fall Mountain, which is just around an hour. So again, very short trips. And when it comes to these small, you know, you know, these cohorts and getting them there, a lot of the times, we're only sending one team a, a day. So we do have that bus limit in our district. So we're, you know, if we have a team like our, I'm just thinking right off the top of my head, our field hockey team, who has enough for both teams, and they want to send both teams to, let's say, Fall Mountain, we're going to send two buses of field hockey kids socially distanced over there so that we are under the requirement of 25. So we're going to be well under that to make sure, and if that means JV on one bus and varsity on the other. And that's, and that goes across the board for football. You know, football and spirit will, will share their, you know, the bus, the buses to their games. And, yeah, no, very excited about that plan. I'm in conversations with our athletic directors, this, this group, all day. So if I know something, if, you know, something's being canceled or whatnot, you know, we, we have a really good rapport. And I can tell you, as of right now, everybody's a go for sports at this time in this cohort. Football, everybody. This is who we are playing. So any other schedules you may have seen that we're playing Raymond, Somersworth, or whatnot, we're not going there. Those, we're not, we're not playing those teams. We're playing the, the teams in this cohort. And there are a few schools, as you can see here, Kearsarge. Kearsarge is not doing contact sports. So we're going to be seeing them in cross-country, and we're also going to be playing a modified, a modified set of rules for field hockey as well. You know, we didn't want to leave them behind, so we were able to get them some games. And Scott Fitzgerald over at Kearsarge was very grateful that we were able to pick up some games with them. This gets into my next point. I know there was some conversations about this and some, in some, in some, in some questions about it. But lining our high school field for multi-sport. This, again, allows us to do a lot of things and keep, you know, and they're very feasible plans, you know, for us to, to make this happen and make sure everybody's safe. The biggest thing that we wanted to get from this was that we wanted to stay within the 50% spectator capacity that the NHIA is requiring us to have on our fields. Unfortunately, the only place that we really can control crowds is on our football field. By doing so, we are able to minimize large groups congregating on multiple fields. By having them on the football/stadium field, we call it the stadium field, is having, let's say, field hockey on that field instead of their own field, that allows us to have them on just one side of the field without worrying about girl soccer or boy soccer practicing on the field right next, next to them, you know, parallel. So it allows us to really make sure that we keep those large groups at a minimum and control where they're sitting. It allows us to clean one area more than, more than others. Excuse me. Again, spectator control, we're going to mark off the bleachers. We're actually going to move some of the portable bleachers from the soccer and field hockey fields and put them on either, on both sides, so people are not standing but sitting in a seat. We are going to mark the bleachers on where people are going to sit. What's also really nice about, about this plan is allowing the home and visitors to have their own sections. You know, the home visitor, the home side has theirs, and the visitors will have their other. So they'll be able to stay at a distance, you know, and, and it's, it's natural. It's not saying, hey, you're going to go over here and go, and go over there. It's, it's a natural setup. And that's what I really liked about the layout. And as I showed you guys, the social distancing signage will be on our porta potties. They'll be on our, you know, the, these yard signs that I shared with you, they'll be throughout our facility. And there'll be that nice big one on our, on our backstop of the baseball field. So when people come through our yellow gate, they'll know exactly what they need to do. And again, you know, we, we'll do some very friendly reminders, myself, you know, just being aggressively friendly, you know, and, and urging people to wear face coverings when they're at our games. Let's see, next slide, please. Great. So when it comes to the field, so I got a few things that I wanted to touch on that are actually, have popped up a little bit since I put this presentation together. The football field, I know there's been some concerns about safety in withstanding the amount of games that are going to be on our football field. I have got confirmation from Valley Turf, our contracted service, that said, actually this morning, said that this is a feasible plan for us to have just athletic competitions on the stadium football field. Looking at this compared to other seasons, there is only three scheduled varsity football games as of right now. If numbers stay as low as they are, that's the only team that's going to, that's the only, that's the only football team that's going to be playing on there, other than the, the handful of games that I know Todd Thompson's working on as well. The same thing goes with our soccer. Soccer is going to probably have four or five, if I remember correctly, four or five home games. And then there, there are four or five home games away. And they're spaced out enough as well, too. There, if you see, there's, I believe, just a JV game and a varsity game on the majority of our weekdays. There are some where we do do some back-to-backs, where we do have, you know, a game after another. But those are only in the weekends because we were able to get more busing to and from, you know, our schools. Also, too, our, the safety protocol, safety plan was also approved by our, our fire marshal here in Canaan. Mr. Fitzgerald gave me, you know, gave me thumbs up on that as well. That plan has also been done. But the thing is, too, is that if this does change, you know, weather, right now, we've had a very dry summer. If weather, you know, gets a little bit wetter and everything, what's nice is we do have the luxury of having, you know, those others, those other fields at our disposal. You know, and working with Todd Holmes over at Valley Turf, you know, he, you know, is very flexible. And if I said, hey, this, we're a week to week, me and him speak. So if I, you know, say, hey, we've got a pretty good amount of rain on this, on this football field, we're going to have to move our games off to that. So what's nice is there's definitely some spacing out, you know, where there's, there's definitely, you know, it's not like back-to-back-to-back-to-back games. You know, there are some times when we, you know, we see Hanover, and we're, we're at Hanover for the first three days, you know, three, three days of the week. So the, the field will get some, will get some rest. And they are going to see, they are going to pay the closest attention to that field more so than the other ones. we'll get some rest and they are gonna see, they are gonna pay the closest attention to that field more so than the other ones because it is our game field. Um, practices will be on the secondary fields. You know, our football team, you know, there will be some instances just because of what's, how it's marked off, you know, there might be some walkthroughs that they can get in the day before. That's usually kind of what is tradition in with our football. And, um, we're moving, we're moving in that direction and we actually feel pretty confident in, on, on that direction. It definitely helps us, um, with spectator control, which was the, one of the biggest concerns that, you know, we had here in the school. And the last thing, I know that we were talking about football. Football is a high-risk sport. It is, and, and if we do consider football and questioning that, we would have to assess other sports as well. Cause there are risks as, you know, as soccer and field hockey are, they are a moderate to high-risk sport. But what I would, would tell you is that right now, as of right now, I don't have the statistics with me cause people, districts, I should say, are constantly even up to today, making decisions on sports. The minority right now is, is actually districts that are not playing sports or football. It's very, very minimal. There is a lot of schools in our, in our state that are playing all sports across the board. Um, we are very fortunate that we are in an area that has very minimal, um, you know, minimal cases right now. And I just, I just hope that, you know, we don't get to that point where we have to reassess, you know, having, having sports on the first day of tryouts and practice. Um, kind of a clarification, I know there was a question by a parent. Um, when it comes to face shields, uh, on helmets and face coverings, they actually do say in the NFHS considerations that a face covering is permissible, you know. Also a face gator. The bandanas or anything that are not two or three ply are actually not recommended. And that also says that also with a face shield, a face shield does not, it's not, it's not a suitable alternative for a face mask or a face shield, I should say. So if kids wanna wear a face mask or a face shield under our face gator or whatever it is under their helmet, they are, by all means, they can wear that. And we had volleyball practice inside today and every one of the girls were wearing a mask and coaches. So they are taking this very serious and they know that if we don't follow these protocols, we're not gonna have a fall sports season. So that's what I got for you. I tried to stay under a half an hour. Thank you.
All right, uh, any questions from the board on Rodney's report? Tim?
Uh, thank you Rodney for putting this all together. Uh, it's very helpful and the creativity that you've put forward is something else. The schedule, uh, first, best of luck to the girls varsity soccer team, starting off their first year playing the big dogs. So, uh, good luck to them. And I, I really appreciate the way you're, uh, reinforcing with the kids, the, the student athletes that, um, you know, it's really on them to maintain, you know, social distancing and mask use and stuff like that. Because it's in their hands and like, we can totally have a year where we don't have any, you know, nothing happens, but it's on them. And so I really appreciate that work there. So thank you very much, Rodney.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Hope?
Um, echoing Tim's sentiments, it's this, the amount of work and everything that's going into all of these plans is astounding. And the, you know, number of details that have to be looked at can be overwhelming. I completely understand it. Um. One of my worries is the face mask, um, the governor's mandate for the gatherings of a hundred people or more. And I see that you addressed it in the D three fall athletics agreement. Um, but the way I look at the mandate is that it's, it's a numbers thing. At once they get to a hundred, um, every single person has to have a mask on. So that would include the players unless you limit the fans to, I mean, I, I don't even know how many people are on a team and how many coaches and all that, but, um, so. Uh, so it says all spectators required to practice social distancing while attending, you know, sports event. Um, so how can you speak to me to a little bit about that? And then also the, um, you know, it's, so it sounds like the kids are, when they're playing, it's optional for them to have a mask on. You end up saying, no, you have to.
No, that is correct. So it is permissible. It is their choice if they'd like to. Um, you know, there have definitely been some coaches asking if it should be a team choice. And I said, no, that should be the individual's choice. So if one kid is feeling comfortable to wear a mask and that's the only person, by all means, that, you know, we should, we, we're gonna allow that. Um, when it comes to the mandate of a hundred or more, that is for spectators only. The, 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 again, the rule is that when athletes are on, in the sidelines, in between the lines, they are, they have the choice to wear one or not. Um, our officials, our football officials are, you know, it, it just sends something out on what, you know, things are gonna look like when it comes to handling the football. Um, the football is gonna be just be, you know, the, the ball that we use is gonna be our ball. The, the officials are actually not gonna be able to touch it. Uh, that's something that we're in charge of. Um, even as simple as, and I'm just thinking of volleyball and the procedures that they've put in. We actually have a rotation of three balls right now, one that's being used, one that's being cleaned and one that's drying from being disinfected. We actually had a volunteer today going through and seeing that process. So it was actually pretty cool to see that. Um, also, you know, when it comes to the social distancing, um, in our, in the considerations for all sports, they also want our, um, our sidelines to be stretched out more, I believe, uh, ten yards on both ends to allow more distancing. So with the use of just the football field, we're gonna be able to have more bleachers out there as well. So kids can be able to sit or stand where, you know, wherever they need on that. And the football stadium also allows us to, again, control a little bit, well, you know, with that. Our boosters have done a great job to put in those temporary ropes in those stanchions. So there's a natural boundary right there as well. Um, you know, our field prep team does a great job. You know, but there are definitely some, there are, there are some markings down on, on our soccer and field hockey fields that, you know, say, hey, you gotta stay behind this line. And not all the time, you know, we, we follow those, you know, and I'm, I'm guilty of that happening as well. So to have that natural boundary, especially in this, you know, current climate, is definitely something we're doing. But I've, I've, you know, and I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it every day this week, next week and so on is, you know, encouraging kids and coaches that, hey, it's okay to wear a mask. You know, it's, it's the cool thing to do right now, you know, and it's okay to get those cool neck gators or whatever it is to make that happen. So, and, you know, we're doing our part to make sure the masks, you know, those, you know, those customized masks make it something that kids, you know, kids can get behind.
So what you're saying is kind of the, it's gonna be a personal preference for their own safety, not necessarily for the whole.
No, it's, 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 it's the way the language is in both the NHIA and the NFHS considerations is that it's permissible. And, um, they're, they are, you know, encouraged to be worn when social distancing isn't, you know, can't be attained. So other than competition, because they do worry about the overheating. And, uh, I did see, um, some live stream games, I don't have a life. I see some live streaming games this weekend from Seacoast United, that's a premier program for soccer. And they had a gigantic Labor Day tournament. And one team I watched didn't have masks at all and another was wearing them, every one of them. So it's definitely, definitely preference right now.
All right, anyone else? Danielle?
I think it's great that there's, I did a little math and it looks like with a hundred and thirty kids signed up at the high school, that's about thirty-eight percent of our high school population, um, that has an interest in high school sports this fall. And I think that's a tremendous asset to our community and, uh, and, and thanks for getting that, getting everyone ready to go for this first day. There's a couple of, uh, questions that I have specifically about the use of the football field and then also some scheduling types of concerns. I know that we've got the assurance of Valley Turf to be able to utilize the field for competitions only. Uh, and it sounds like football team will be practicing perhaps not on the field itself, but on the secondary field to allow us just another space, uh, for them. But I wonder what is the backup plan or the plan B if we had, you know, a really horrible week of wet weather and that field is torn up, as we know that it sometimes, uh, has done in the past. There, for the others, for the other sports, we've got the ability or the luxury, as you mentioned, of being able to utilize their, their kind of primary field. Um, but for football, that's really the only option. Um, and so my first question is, what will happen if, uh, if this becomes an issue as we move along?
So that's something that actually all of us A.D.s have spoke about, about what, you know, a schedule would look like when it comes to, you know, uh, rain, rain and weather and what that might look like. And honestly, we, that's, it's, it's a puzzle. The puzzle, it's this, this schedule that you're seeing right now was a puzzle because every district has certain parameters that we needed to follow. I know Lebanon on certain days can't get a bus until three fifty. So we do have some games starting at five o'clock and we're only allowed to have, you know, varsity only games because of that. Um, this has a lot to do with the weather as well. If weather does come up, there is a chance that we won't be able to reschedule those games based on the fact that the cohort we're a part of. Other, you know, other schedule, you know, other weeks are filled with games against other teams. So we might not be able to co-mingle when it comes to that. So we're, you know, we're holding out hope that we can, you know, not have to reschedule games. But again, if, you know, the weather, the weather does do what it usually does in the fall, we do see some rain. You know, we would adjust and to allow, you know, you know, teams to, to get back on their fields. But our, you know, our primary focus is to focus on our stadium field and making sure that that is kept, you know, kept up where it is and just keep an eye on it and really lean on my, my, my field team there to give me the, you know, the best, you know, recommendations on it. And there's, it's, it's like, it was like that last year, even just with our, our normal plan with soccer and, and field hockey, you know, saying, hey, can we get this game? And I know it's, it's rained all day and they give me the, the God's honest opinion on it and, you know, we roll with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, my second question is around, uh, again, scheduling and this is maybe more so thinking about our middle school student athletes, knowing that we've had issues in the past, especially in the fall season in trying to get buses for IRS athletics. Uh, because they tend to fall lower on the totem pole than high school athletics. If we're taking up multiple buses, which is the allotment for the district, uh, in extracurricular buses. And if we're using those all for the high school teams, where does that leave our, uh, where does that leave our middle school athletes? And just how have we, how will we accommodate that? And that may not be a question for you. Um, but I, I have concerns.
That's, I was gonna ask you.
Yep.
Yes, we do prioritize the high school sports because it's NHIAA. And we only have two buses per day with our contract with Butler. So that's what we get. And there won't be any whole curricular stuff going on. There's no field trips, nothing like that. So. I would think we, it depends on how big the teams are that are playing. If they need two buses for the field hockey team, then no, there's not gonna be buses for the middle school.
Okay, that's, that's fine. But I just wanted to raise that issue, knowing that it has been a concern in past years, even without the COVID restrictions. And, uh, and whether or not that means that we as a district need to consider some sort of update to our policy to allow parents, for example, to, to transport students at the middle school level, if that's gonna be what it takes in order to get athletics in at that. But just wanted to raise that. And then.
That's a good point, Danielle. I have, you know, tried to get this schedule out as quick as possible and my transportation schedule as well to Butler Bus, you know, to make sure that, you know, Todd and Eileen that I'm, I'm working with over there have everything they need to do it. And, you know, we are thankful that we actually have a little bit of a staggered start here. So high school sports are starting two weeks ahead of time to IRS. So there's a little bit of time when it comes to, you know, scheduling for them as well. But.
Yep, great. And then for crowd control spectators, um, we know that there will be no spectators for the indoor sports. So this fall, that includes volleyball and outdoors, um, you've, um, you've made the case for using the football, the stadium field. Um, so that there's more space for people to kind of spread out there. Are we gonna be doing any sort of headcount, um, of people coming to the actual field? Or is it more going to be kind of just the, the social distance police going around the area and, uh, and kind of keeping an eye on that?
So in my, my grand scheme of things, I'd love to have a, you know, a press, you know, not a, a box office, you know, for people to come in, you know, you go to some of the bigger schools and you see the gated area and whatnot. And it's, it's very hard to do that at, at Maskoma to, you know, control exactly how many people are coming in. But we definitely will be going around, um, in, you know, socially distancing and, and reminding everyone to wear those. And we have some, actually some subtle creative things that we're excited to do with our spirit team. Um, one of them being, um, you know, having some signage that say, instead of we heart Maskoma, it's we mask Maskoma. You know, and have the, the symbol of the mask. And I saw some great stuff that we saw, some chalkwork here by our salt team as the kids came in today. I never realized it and I'm glad, you know, that they got some creative, creative minds here, but mask oma? You know, I, I think that's a cool way too, that we can, we can get behind that as well. So. Um, I'm pretty, pretty excited about the ideas that, you know, our teams are putting together to, um, you know, make sure that our spectators are, are following what they need to do. And to kind of go, and to go off of what you said as well about the volleyball spectators. Um, yeah, yes, we are not allowing spectators into our, into our gym for games and the Royals Athletic Boosters are graciously put, put out there to, um, to stream some, to stream some games for not just the volleyball, but for our fall sports. Um, and how, you know, in, in working with Granite State Sports Network, they've done some great stuff for us in the past with graduation and, and our playoff games and, and so forth. So we're excited about what that's gonna look like.
Great, thanks.
And one other thing too, just the last couple of questions have actually made me think of it. Um, we are compiling a list, us athletic directors of what each district is gonna entail when it comes to what's allowed and what isn't allowed. Um, I have shared that with my, my fall coaches. They are part of that Excel sheet. Um, when those, when those weeks come that we are playing, let's say Lebanon, you know, that will be shared out with all stakeholders to say, you know, this is what you should expect if you're going to Lebanon.
Okay, any other questions for Rodney? Brewster?
Okay, am I unmuted? Okay. How's that? Oh, no, don't touch it. Okay. All right, don't touch it. I'll stay under thirty minutes. And, and bear with me Rodney, cause I've written down a bunch of things and I'll let you answer them after I get done listing them all off. And, um, the trainer situation, I'm happy you're trying to wo- work that out. That's a great thing. Uh, I actually looked at the schedules. I like the night games that the teams are gonna go play some of the sports. They're gonna go off and play away games and night games. Uh, the question, and I'll go on to some other stuff, but this question on the footballs at the home games, usually there's two footballs for each team. Took home team has two, visiting team has two, cause they use their own, the visiting team uses their own footballs. That's probably gonna be the same case. Or they're gonna, they're also gonna sanitize them as they're going along. Because I know the football officials, I haven't looked at, you said that. But football officials have to touch them because you have to mark the ball on the football field usually, unless they're gonna change that way they're doing it this year. If they are, then that's fine. I don't care. That's, you've already got that information. Um, the other thing, uh, the playoffs, uh, that's a ways away, I guess, uh, regards to what they're gonna do about playoffs for these teams. Um, I still have, and it's in my pay grade, it doesn't matter. But, uh, I still have reservations. I understand how you put this all about doing the games on the, on the football field. But the field hockey, field hockey teams need a different type of field to play on. It's a lot shorter grass. Uh, I know in the past, I've had a lot of officials here at Maskoma, when they, game officials. Let me speak, they speak specifically, game officials. They don't like the soccer field here in, in the past. It's always rough and it's tough and all this stuff. And it, and it's bumpy. And we've gone over that a number of years. I understand putting a football, putting them play on the football field will be a different story. Um, but with the number of games that you got listed here for boys and girls. But with the number of games that you got listed here for boys and girls soccer and adding the football games, which are very minimum, we're only three of them, you're still going to have I feel you're going to have your field hockey coaches are going to not be happy about playing on the football field. And even with changing the, of the uh, the markings, that can be confusing too, based on it's not a turf field. And, and, and I know I'm, I'm probably the minority about this whole thing. I understand you're trying to do distance, distance for spectators. Um, I think uh, you, if you do run into weather problems, you're going to have to go to the alternative thing. But I feel very strongly that your field hockey coaches are not going to be happy about playing on a football field that gets torn up by not just three games with a football team, but with the soccer, number of soccer games you got listed here. Um, they, they're not going to be happy about playing, playing a field hockey game with the ball bouncing all over the place where it is. Um, that's one thing. The other thing is with spectators. He can't, you can't separate the spectators if you had to go to the alternative fields. You just gotta do the same thing. You just gotta make sure they're not on the end lines. I mean, I know you've, I know you've thought this all out with the football field. Um, I just think it's not a turf field. The turf field, when you have, you go look at a turf field, it's lined for dif- multi sports. It's very visible. It's very marketable. Maybe turf companies thinks they can mark that field, football field. So there's no confusion. Um, I'm also thinking that I realize that uh, I think Lebanon only plays on their field with, don't get me wr- wrong here. I think they play their football field with lacrosse. If they play during the fall, I don't know if they play at fall. Anyway, they, football field, they play on the football field when they need to, but um, I, I just you know, I, I'm, as I said, I'm on the minority, I imagine, and I, I just think it's uh, I know you've thought this out very highly and I just think it's uh, it's gotta be a way to minimize, maybe if you want to do football in soccer on the football field with girls and boys soccer on the football field. Let the varsity play, field hockey play on their, their, their regular field. That would be feasible, I would say. Because you can get, you can spread the people out at the field hockey field. Um, because what you're saying is you gotta keep spectators away from the home benches and the visiting benches on field hockey. Um, but I, I just, I just, um, I'm, you know, I, I, it's, it's up to you and you, you're going to make that decision. It's not going to be me overriding you. Uh, I just think it's it's, it's not going to be a very feasible situation. If, if we do have weather, I know you, you, you wait for the last second to have this happen. As I said, I, I don't, if we had a turf field, I would be all for, okay? But I've seen it in the past. So all right, so that's, that's it. All I got, I mean, the footballs, you can answer that one for me real easy, I guess.
So yes, so what they're doing is, is to mark the ball, they're actually going to be using their, their foot. So the foot will be where they mark it. So when it, when the, the change of possession happens, the football, the, the referee will have their foot where the ball's going to be placed. And that's when the, the football gets changed. And, and I believe we are also able to um, move in more than two balls as well. So that again, like this, the thing that's happening with volleyball. We're able to, you know, cycle them through so that they can be cleaned. So that could, that's going to be a, you know, staff member that's going to have to, you know, be tasked to, to clean them as they, they come and go. And the um, the, the, the field, the stadium field, it would, would be lined. Football's going to be white. Purple is going to be a nice bright purple from what Todd Holmes told me is going to be soccer. And then gold is going to be field hockey. When it comes to that. And they have, they've told me that that's going to, it's going to pop and people will know which ones they are. It will be some getting used to. But there are definitely some things that are just out of our control a little bit. And this allowed us this option, this layout allowed us to check off a lot of those, you know, guidelines that have been set forth.
Okay. Any other questions for Rodney? Okay. Thank you again, Rodney, for all your efforts, your hard work. I appreciate you taking the time to answer the question from Jennifer in regards to the shields. Um, that's uh, that response is going to be helpful for her boys who play. Uh, so there again, in the field questions, I know that's a tough decision to have to do, but in the situation right now, we got to do what we got to do and try to get the sports played. So seeing nothing further. Thank you again, Rodney. New under new business, we have first day of school reports. And I'm going to open them up to Leah of Can, Canyon Elementary, please.
All right, can you guys hear me okay? So I wanted to start by first just giving a big thank you to um, the incredible dedicated and professional staff at C E S. They've done a great job um, taking on all the challenges this year has brought. So huge thank you to everybody there. Um, second big thank you is to the community. They have been great and very flexible with everything that we've asked this year. I thought I would just run very quickly through the areas that Amanda asked us to cover. So let's see, our enrollment as of today is two hundred and two students. Approximately a hundred and sixty-five of those are in school students and the other thirty-five are in our remote academy. We had all of our students here today except two for illness reasons. And uh, one remote student with a technology issue that we fixed. We have twelve in-school teachers this year and three teachers who are teaching our remote students. All told, we have five new staff members this year. Um, Todd Rudis, who's in uh, special education teacher. Heather Obie, who's our new speech uh specialist. Natalia Callahan is a new para educator. Uh, Jack Kelly is our new day custodian. And Michelle Monfet, um, although not new to the district, is new to us and is working as the special ed secretary. Uh, because Tammy Daly, of course, has moved into the position as the administrative assistant. Physical changes, uh, we've seen at our school, the same ones we've seen at all the others in terms of things like floor decals. Hand sanitizer on the walls. Uh, Plexiglas shields between sinks, things like that. Um, but separately, over the summer, we also finished the last part of the program um, for replacing the ceilings and putting in some new lights, which have made a really big difference in the way the school looks. In terms of the opening day, I would say it all overall, it went really, really well. It was quite wonderful to have all the students back in the building. I think all the staff could feel it as well, that it was a really happy day. I think it's been a, it's been a long time since we've had all that joy in the school. We did have one snafu with logistics, which is that our morning um, we were moving too slowly, getting our car riders out of the car since there's so many more this year. So we've adjusted that and I think it'll work much smoother tomorrow. Went really, really well, but the arrival was a bit rough. And then I was allowed sort of one extra section in the report. So I put in my appreciations there. Um, a couple I already listed, but I'd also like to do a few others. Um, a huge appreciation to Tammy Daly. She had to work really hard this summer to um, find out all the ins and outs of her new position and help us get ready for a very unusual start to the school year. And then I'd also like to thank in particular Kyle Adet, Sarah Hill and Katie Holm, because they've taken on the remote teaching, which means they've had a lot of new technology and a lot of changes. And some of them did not get a lot of notice about their new teaching assignment. And last, just wanted to let everyone know how grateful we are to the P T A who've been doing some wonderful things at school, especially in the gardens and the community at large. And then I guess I'll just take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Leah?
Just real quick, I do want to say thank you Leah for all of your hard work um, on behalf of the board. Uh, I did drive by, I saw the cars lining backing up out, but I thought, you know what? That's a normal first day of school with everybody wanting to take a picture of their kid as they get out of the car. So I, I, I think you're off to a good start. So thank you.
All right, anything else for Leah? All right, thank you for joining us Leah and thank you for all your hard work, like Tim said. All right, uh, next up, uh, we'll go to Harrison at Enfield Village School, please.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Very good. Um, so you will have my uh, report in hand and I apologize, it came through very much the eleventh hour. So thank you to Martha and Amanda for scrambling to get it uh, in front of you. Um, I'll just hit a couple of highlights. Um, under enrollment and attendance, um, you can see the numbers there. So that green box is the um, total number of students enrolled in person. Uh, blue box is remote. And then we have five students who have um, registered as homeschool students for the year, uh, at least for now. Uh, I will say very quickly that um, I um, have had six families now approach me about um, returning to full in-person learning that had initially opted for the remote option. Um, and um, unfortunately, I've, I've had to let folks know that we're not able to accommodate that request at this time. We know we're going to give everybody that option to get in the quarter. Um, but I have, I have held my ground on that because we frankly, we just can't do it. The way we've set up the rooms, the way we've arranged staffing, um, we, we just are not able to accommodate, you know, changes on a daily basis like that. So um, there may be a couple of folks out there who, who think a little less of me, but it is, it is what it is. And I'm trying to hold that line for the staff and the student body. Um, on staffing, real quick, we've got a, a, a lot of phenomenal additions to the staff, but I'm going to take you down a couple of quick notes. Um, we did add Lauren Simpson to the teaching staff. So you may know that name. Uh, she was a phenomenal title math tutor for us. She'll be a phenomenal teacher for us. Um, but we were able to do that by um, basically foregoing the behavior coach position at the S S and the S S C for the year. This is something that we talked about with the staff and we talked about with the S A U. I think it's a smart decision. Um, it will make things challenging on a different front. Um, we needed to do it to make sure our classes stayed below the fifteen number that I promised families we would. But it will make things a little bit tricky and we are definitely going to be looking to refill this position. We'll start looking at that in February for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two year. Um, and we do have some, some vacant positions we're still looking to fill. Um, and, and we're, we're working on that. But we, we did just fine opening today with the numbers that we have and we will fill in some of those gaps as we go. Um, on physical changes, I'm going to skip over most of the stuff up top there. Um, a lot of stuff that I'm pretty proud of that we did to transform this building um, and, and get it ready. Um, the nurses office, which was a big one, but under the also there, the ellipsis. Just want to point out, those are all things that are completely unrelated to preparations for COVID nineteen and social distancing. Those are all things that we had planned for and that we budgeted for. And I didn't want to let any of those fall by the wayside. So um, we kept our custodial staff and, and custodial staff around the district pretty busy at E B S this summer and some, some contracted services as well uh, to keep things on, on, on track. And just everyone did a phenomenal job of coming together and doing everything we need to do to get the building ready for COVID, in addition to everything that we had planned to do to keep E B S moving forward. So um, kudos to, to our custodians across the district for their help there and their commitment to getting that stuff done. Um, the next page there, the opening day overview. Um, I echo Leah's sentiments. It was just fantastic to get the kids back into the building. And I think so many of the things that we had all been so anxious about for so long, like kids wearing masks were, were just not an issue. Um, I, I, I won't say that every kid had a, had a perfectly easy transition to the masks, but frankly, ninety-five percent of them did. I think that the kids adjusted better than the adults did. Um, and it was pretty impressive to see. So they, a lot of my concerns abated. Um, I will say, and this is just something that I, that I want to call, call right out is that um, dismissal E B S today was um, a, a complete disaster. Um, a complete disaster. And frankly, it was embarrassing. Um, it was, kids were safe. Everybody got to the right parent. But it took us like forty-five minutes to do what should take us ten. Um, we backed up on Route four and we've, we've got to do it differently tomorrow. I've already put a message out to the E B S community and we'll work on it. Um, but if anybody hears anything about any complaints about dismissal of E B S, they are warranted and we will fix them. Uh, and surprisingly, drop off went very, very well. So it's sort of the opposite, I guess, of what happened at C E S, but uh, we need to work on pickup. Um, building safety, um, you know, I, I've got a lot of stuff in there again about our preparations and expectations for students. Uh, you can look at that at your, your leisure. Um, remote academy, I've got a few bullets in here on. Um, so our, our three teachers for remote academy are, are Deb Alexander, who's taking on three, four, Hi Younger, who's taking on one, two. And Kristi Lethen is taking on kindergarten in the afternoons. Um, this is a pretty dynamic team and I'm pretty excited about their level of excitement and commitment. I did not strong arm anyone and two into taking on these assignments. Um, well, Kristi Lethen, to a small extent, I did, I did give her a little bit of persuasion, but she was super enthusiastic when I approached her and said, you know what? Okay, Harrison. Um, so it's been great and they've been collaborating a lot and they've done a really nice job. And I think that their communication to parents has been very professional and thorough. And um, I'm excited to see what happens with the remote academy at E B S. I think it's going to be quite good. And it will also help us to reset ourselves as an entire school, should the need arise for us all to move back to remote academy. They, they are going to pave the way. Um, scheduling. Um, again, I think a lot of the stuff I've talked about before, so I won't go through the bullets in particular. You can take a look at them. But um, yes, I, I am very excited that we have this opportunity to reopen. I know many schools throughout the country and throughout New Hampshire are, are, are not, not taking um, are, are not going to go for it. And I, I understand that. I know that it's different in different places. Uh, but I'm glad that we had the chance to, and I think that we can pull this off. And um, it was just great to see her be back again. So thank you.
All right. Thank you Harrison so much for everything. It wasn't as bad as what you thought about this afternoon, honestly.
I think you're being too nice.
Any questions for Harrison? Tim? Yeah. Well, well improved. No, no worries. All right, moving on, um, Mr. Kevin Toll, principal of Indian River School. Welcome, Kevin.
Welcome. Can you hear me? Hello? Am I there? Okay. So uh, yeah, our, our current enrollment, uh, we have two hundred and forty-eight kids uh, today that attended school. Uh, that actually got better as the day went along when we uh, uh, crunched the numbers. Most of those kids are in moving transit. In other words, they've left the district. We don't have uh, requests for records yet. So we're, we were down to like nine students absent today. Uh, which is pretty phenomenal when you look at seventy-seven are in the remote mode and the rest were in person. Uh, all were accounted for. Uh, the kids were excited to be back today. Uh, it, it just was a smooth start for us. It was very smooth opening. Uh, and I have a lot of kudos to uh, my office team with uh, Tina Fleming and Tina Buckwald and uh, Marissa Ignacio. They just did an outstanding job today. Uh, in getting everything to work as smoothly as it did. Uh, we have uh, all the staff members there that are new, they're listed for you. I'm not going to read through that list. I will go through that the uh, remote academy teachers are Teresa Westgate doing grade eight, Holly Howes is doing grade seven. Sarah Duncan is doing grade six. Beth Hutchins is doing grade five. And Sarah Champagne is doing the math for grade six, seven and eight. And I also have uh, Mr. Lantman doing um, a STEM for grade seven. So everybody's pitching in. Uh, I can't speak of just how great the staff is to work with at Indian River. Uh, they pitched in, they're rolling with it. Uh, I expected a whole lot more headaches today and was very uh, pleased to see that a lot of my fears never even surfaced. So uh, that speaks to the staff that you have at Indian River School that I get to enjoy. Uh, we currently have three positions that hopefully you're going to fill tonight. And uh, during the summertime, well, actually the months that we didn't have students in the building. A major overhaul in painting, the hallways and classrooms, uh, really look sharp at the school. Uh, and uh, the, there's, we're still working on getting things down on the floor as far as social distancing and some of those things. Uh, but it's coming together nicely. And the kids are really paying attention to where the spots are, where they're supposed to stand. Uh, I would say ninety-nine percent of the kids wore their masks today consistently without any problem. One or two, or, you know, it's middle school. We got to challenge the rules and to see just how far we can push it. Uh, but uh, we're able to talk them into the, wearing the mask and, and playing along with us. So uh, So the plan for this year is to provide the best educational opportunities amongst these trying times. I know in years past, I've talked about our plan to be a Nellam Spotlight School or to push UDL in our school or PBIS. It's really simple this year, best opportunities for the entire year under these challenging times. And I think we have a great plan, and we had a very good first day, for sure. The morale, the staff were excited to see the kids. The kids were excited to see their friends and see the staff. And now it's just a matter of maintaining, how can we maintain this going forward? Because those masks are going to get really hot and heavy in two weeks. So it's longevity more than the shortness of the opening day. But that's my report, and we've got a great staff we're working with, for sure.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Any questions for Kevin? Tim?
Hear me? Hear me? Okay. As you know, I have my daughter in seventh grade and remote, and she reported it went really well. She said it was much more like a regular school day than it was in the spring, like when we had to do this on the fly. So kudos to them, and you know, so far, so good. I did a drop-off this morning, it went very smoothly. So I'll talk to more about that when Tom starts talking, but yeah, thank you, Kevin.
My pleasure.
All right, anything else for Kevin? Bridget?
Quick question, Kevin. I was thinking about like morning announcements and for those that are remote versus in-person, and this probably goes for more than just your school, but I happened to have someone reach out about sports today. So I wasn't sure, is this all part of the Google Classroom setup, or is it something that's still going out to those who are not in the school?
There is a PowerPoint slideshow that's on our website, and that carries the daily announcements that got set up today. Camlin now has it, and all the information is on that for anyone to see. And Todd added a slideshow about sports today. So if you go to the website, you should be able to see all the announcements and we're saying for the community at large.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And I don't know if you heard my comment earlier, that the way you dismissed the students this afternoon for the buses was extremely helpful. The students kept their distance, they lined up out in front of the bus, they had their mask on. So it worked out really well, so thank you for that. And yes, these masks are very hot, it was a very warm afternoon.
That it was.
Oh my goodness. All right, thank you so much. And last but not least, Mr. Fitzgerald, hello, Tom.
Good evening, everybody. So as you know, today was actually the first day of our SOF's start. We just had the freshmen, and it was the equivalent of our freshman orientation. Our enrollment currently looks like we're pretty steady at like where we were last year, about 345 students total. Today, we had, of the 95 freshmen that we had, 93 showed up for orientation. And we have about 33 students in our building that are in the Remote Academy. So we're pretty excited. Staffing, we are pretty much full. We are waiting for one pair that Chris Biso is working on, and we have our study hall monitor that you are approving tonight, hopefully. And in terms of professional staff, we are fully staffed except for a long-term sub in one position, but otherwise, we feel pretty confident. I think overall, this spring, we had an outstanding hiring season, that we added some really quality people to the high school. So I'm really excited to add them to the staff, and they've been paying dividends from the start. A good example is when we needed a new Spanish teacher on a last-minute, Colleen McIntyre, our new assistant principal, knew a girl that she had been teaching since she was six years old that had just got out of college, and Lindsay Coolidge is outstanding, so really excited to have her. I thought our screening process went really well this morning. I was out on the bus loop, asking kids their names, saying good morning, screening their temperature, asking them what they did this weekend, how they felt. So, you know, it was kind of a backdoor way. If they said, oh, I just got back from California, I would have sent them right to the nurse. But we didn't have any of those, seemed like everybody kind of stayed in town, so we're pretty happy about that. Our signage seems to be working really well. I think we did a good job laying that out, although if you've been in the main lobby, it looks like the biggest game of Twister you've ever seen in your life, but people are figuring it out pretty easily at this point. We had both breakfast and lunch in cafeteria today. That works out pretty well. We did have to do a little training around three people at a table. We're pretty excited, having talked with Anton, that he, because he really likes cooking, he's been doing a great job, he thinks we can have pretty close to a full menu at our school, so I think that'll help our kids out a lot, so we're happy about that. And I would have to agree with my colleagues, masks did not seem to be an issue today. We had boxes of masks at both doors, and I think we handed out a total of maybe five masks total. And we gave one mask break other than lunch today, and you know, they were troopers, although you could see, not having been in school for close to six months, energy started to fade around 2 o'clock. But I think our process worked well, especially today, since this was our first new group. You know, this did function really as a freshman orientation. We kind of did a mix-up, they spent some time in class, like we broke the two cohorts into two groups. One was in the auditorium while one went to the teachers, then we swapped them out, and we talked about academic expectations, we distributed all their Chromebooks. Rodney got to talk about after-school activities. We got in our new fire drill procedure that needs some tweaking, but that was kind of the beauty of only having 80 kids at a time. So all in all, I thought it was a really good first day. The staff has stepped it up. We were really talking about and been pushing that, you know, this week, it's the power of positivity, building relationships, how much, you know, we missed them, we're kind of demonet, kind of like Love 'Em Up Week this week, just happy to see everybody. And a special shout-out goes to our SOF student athletic leadership team headed up by Eric Remage. They were up here last night putting the positive chalk messages on the sidewalk, which was a great way to welcome everybody back. You know, our plan is, we have each class has different needs, so we will tweak what we do tomorrow for sophomores and Wednesday, no, tomorrow is Wednesday, right? Yeah, tomorrow for sophomores, Thursday for juniors, and Friday for seniors. You know, seniors have burning questions that I'm trying to get answered, things like, what about bonfire, et cetera, et cetera, and I've been in contact with Chief Bellian about those kinds of issues. But I think we're off to a good start. We're going to practice the fire drill again tomorrow with sophomores, and then with juniors and seniors, and then do it with each cohort next week, so we feel like we'll have that down. But the staff has done a great job, custodians have done a great job. It's just great to have everybody back, it was a good first day.
Thank you, Tom. It sounds like it. Tim has a question.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, it went really smoothly. You know, my daughter was here today, and she reported it went really great. So thank you for making that, you know, first day for freshmen really great and special. Drop-off was probably one of the smoothest I've ever had at this campus, which is incredible, because I went in thinking, oh, no, this is going to be a disaster. The only two parts I saw where like, you know, it could be tweaked is what slows it down, it was really great, because like six cars would come in, they'd drop off, and then boom, boom, boom. The only part that slows it down is when people stop to let out kids at the stop sign exiting the parking lot. And so I would just say kind of maybe either signage or like a sawhorse or something, because that's a safety issue, you have kids running across the parking lot after that. But that's really the biggest slowdown I saw, but it was really, it went really smoothly. And, you know, thank you. And the chalk messages outside, I walked in this evening to see those, and those were great, I loved them, and these masks, oh my, it's so great, I love it. So thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Anyone else for Tom? Okay, well, thank you again, sir, and we'll see you in the morning.
Thank you.
All right, so next up on the agenda, we have in our packet some bids for pellets, and I'll turn that over to Deb Ford.
Okay, so I put out pellets to bid to Lime Green Heat, Sandry Energy, and Vermont Renewable Fuels. I think I usually just get the two bids, so that's what I was expecting. So I would need you to approve the bid to Lime Green Heat, who's a low bidder and has been our pellet supplier pretty much since we have gotten pellet boilers.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Tim?
I'll make a motion that we approve the pellet bid for the school year 2020, 2021 to Lime Green Heat in the amount of $96,900 for 425 tons of pellets.
Second.
Danielle Thompson for the second. Okay, discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of approving Lime Green Heat for the pellet contract for the year 2020, 2021, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? And passes, 6-0-0.
Thank you, and that's the same price they gave us last year.
Oh, that's great. Okay, next on the agenda, we also have for Deb Ford, a golf cart lease, which is the one I spoke about a few minutes ago in our financing facilities meeting, so.
Yes, so it is surprising that it was five years ago that we got the golf cart, and it's been a wonderful addition to, for athletics and other events as well, when people need a little ride. Yes, the price did go up considerably from $125 a month to $180 a month, but it has been five years. They did give us a buyout price that was a little bit less than $4,000, but we're not good at owning things, we're really good at leasing things. And it makes sense financially, too, that they service it, and then we turn it in when we're done with it.
Okay. And do I have a motion to accept, so we can discuss?
I'll make a motion that we accept the golf cart lease bid of $180 a month for a five-year lease.
Second.
Hope, hope straggles for the second. Okay, discussion? I think we've had a fair dealings with the company. I've heard nothing bad about, you know, having the lease, and I think you're right, it's better off that we don't own it.
They have been a great company to work with, and they come service it every year. I think we had one time where we needed something fixed, and they came and fixed it, but it's really been low maintenance. We just service it right before we put it up in the fall.
Okay.
So do they service it a part of the contract, or is it, it says $195 per vehicle to service it? So that's not included?
That's not included, that's per year, they charge us $195 when they come to service it.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the approval of the lease, five-year lease at $180 a month for the golf cart, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? And that passes, thank you, 6-0-0.
Bridget, as secretary, after the meeting, I'll have you sign in about four different places.
You are important tonight. Okay, Capital Reserve Funds Transfer Request, again, Deb Ford.
Okay, this request is out of the Capital Reserve for cafeteria equipment. So the evaporator and the condenser on the EBS freezer that we were talking about earlier in financing facilities, we did have to get that fixed. It was rather expensive, but it was important to get it fixed before school came in. So I used money out of the equipment fund, but that $13,660 just for the unit itself pretty much wipes out my fund for the repairs for cafeteria equipment for the whole year. There's also some additional work to install the electrical for that, so that's why the request is for up to $15,000. But I'll only take out the amount I actually need when I get the bills for that. But we do have a couple of other units in the district that Corrado mentioned at financing facility that are, it was the way they were set up, so that they're, so they put this one on the roof instead of on top of the unit. The other good thing about replacing this is the unit is way more efficient, because it's new.
Yep.
But yeah, these kinds of things, I think you don't want to just fail. And we did have a little warning, it went down in December and again in March, so I wasn't surprised when it went down and they fixed it.
Right, and the way it sits on top of the unit, there's not enough air to circulate it, and that's exactly why they go, so. Okay, I'll look for a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the transfer of up to $15,000 from the cafeteria equipment Capital Reserve Fund for the Enfield Village School Evaporator and Condenser.
Second.
Danielle Thompson for the second, thank you. Any further discussion? And like I said, Corrado is going to be, look at some of the other units to try to be a little bit more proactive, which, you know, it's, it'll save us hopefully in the long run. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstentions? And the pass is 6-0-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Deb. Now we have policy JLDBB-R, Suicide Prevention Procedures Approval. Amanda, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. So JLDBB is a policy that was approved by the board on the 23rd of June. In this policy is embedded that the superintendent will create a plan and have that approved by the board. So the JLDBB-R is more of a procedure plan that the district will be putting in place as we start to work with students in the suicide prevention model. In doing some research on this, the Trevor Project does a very nice and comprehensive job, so you are seeing their school-based model. If you skipped right to the end of that, you would see the various organizations with whom they work in order to create a plan that's well-rounded and well-based and meets the needs for the most students. I will also say that the Trevor Project model that you have in front of you is the JLDBB-R that most other school districts use. So, you know, I wish I was some type of a genius and had written a wonderful plan, but there was no need for that. Instead, we did some research, we looked to see Kier Saj is using it, and very, likes it a lot, and feels very comfortable with that, this plan. So that is the plan that I am proposing right now, that I would like Nancy Murphy will move through and do some training with our guidance counselors, with our social workers on how we best implement it, and she will be locking in some specific names as we move forward with it. But this is the plan that I would like approval from the board for tonight.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve policy JLDBB-R as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Danielle. Discussion? Questions, comments? Danielle?
Just to note that September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and this particular week is New Hampshire Suicide Prevention Week, and as part of the New Hampshire Suicide Prevention Council, we've been doing some stuff with Dartmouth Hitchcock and other organizations around the state and around the country, and this is part of the materials that I've seen mentioned. And this is part of the materials that I've seen mentioned as resources for schools. So I think it's a, a good model to, a good evidence-based proven model that's out there.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Nancy. And.
Wasn't there a time crunch here? Or did we meet that timeframe? There is?
We're very close on meeting that timeframe. We are mandated to have a two-hour suicide prevention training for our staff. So there was that RSA that was recently presented and approved. So that suicide prevention training now at two hours is something that you will notice that Nancy had put into place. And that has to be fulfilled by our teachers, coaches, substitutes, all other employees of the district by the end of the 2021 school year. So yes, there's a little bit of a time crunch that we are on in adopting these.
Anything else? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And it passes six zero zero. Thank you. All right. Agenda items for the next meeting? Yep. Just basic reports. At this point, I don't think we have anything of, you know, besides the COVID update and all of that, but just see, see how, that's what I was just gonna say. We'll just have to wait and see, right? So, okay. Well, I'll open up to public comments. Well, we don't have any public comment in the auditorium. So I'll move it to the Zoom. Is there anyone that would like to comment? Dan? Dan Kylie?
Just a quick one. Cause I don't know if Rodney went over it, but what about spectators? Are we going to mandate masks for spectators? Because, yeah, okay. We are going to mandate it then. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Anyone else on the Zoom that would like to make a comment?
Cookie, I just wanted to let the board know that Mr. Told did give me his slideshow between the end of school today and getting to the meeting tonight. It's not on. But it is done and it's ready and it's going to get on tonight. So if you are, check the middle school website or go on and check it between now and when you get home, it won't be there, but it will be there by the time you get up tomorrow morning, I promise.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, Kamala. Anyone else on the Zoom for comment? Okay. Seeing none. We have personal resignations and nominations to go through now.
So you do have the sheet in front of you. It is simply renewals that we have for some professional development representatives, for some Title I tutors and for various co-curricular activities. We also have some mentors in there, I do believe. But basically filling our group of, you know, co-curricular advisors.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments on any of these? Bridget?
I have two. One is, I can't remember where we landed on chorus and such. And I was just noticing the Meister singers. Are we still, where did we land? Are we doing this?
Well, at this point, I don't want to walk anyone out of a potential stipend. So we have it in here with your approval, but we are certainly not going to do any singing unless we are absolutely safe. So this is not necessarily a guarantee that we're going to have kids singing or even have drama productions. But I also don't want to deny a child an opportunity if it becomes available or to deny a teacher an advisory position.
Okay.
So yes, we are very mindful of singing.
My second one might be more of a non-public conversation question.
Sure. It would be permissible for the board to enter non-public with a vote at this time.
Okay. Kim, you had a question?
I just had a quick question based off what Bridget just asked. So if, if something is not held, like let's say we do not have drama at IRS. Are we still, is that still a stipend position or are they, or is he doing something different? Like would it look different? You know what I'm saying? Like maybe instead of putting on production, he has students do like, you know, small, two people, three people videos. You know what I'm saying? So like it will, it will be more fierce. It'll be very flexible.
Yes, I would agree, Tim. It may not be the formal production that we are accustomed to sharing for drama. Instead, it may look like some drama lessons for kids or some other type of drama-based experience. So we would make sure the kids had that opportunity.
Okay. Any other questions on this particular sheet? Okay. Seeing none. I think we have to allow Bridget to ask her question in non-public. And do we have any non-public for tonight?
We do, Cookie. We have non-public for the purposes of hiring.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Tim? Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public session in accordance with RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman two subset A and B.
Second.
Thank you, Danielle. He threw you off on that one. Roll call, Bruce to go. We have to hear you.
How about that? Yes.
Bridget Libree. Bridget? Jim Josephson?
Yes.
Danielle Thompson?
Yes.
Hope Stragnow?
Yes.
Cookie Hebert. Yes, we are in non-public. We'll give it a minute so we can close up the auditorium.
Anyone in the public would like to join us for after of the non-public session, then I will invite you back. Right now I'm going to put anyone who is not a member of the school board into the waiting room and I will invite you back afterward. Thank you. All right. I believe everybody's back.
Okay. And are we recording? Seth?
Just push the button.
Oh, there it is. Okay. So the nominations and notification sheet, are we voting on that minus that one that was missed?
Yes, Cookie. So my apologies to the board. There is a new hire on there that should not be there. So I would ask, we will fix that at the SAU level. And I would ask that the board would approve the renewals as they're listed on that sheet, if you would please.
I'll make a motion that we accept the renewals as presented.
Second.
Bridget Libree for the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that passes six zero zero. Next sheet we have is the new hires. And I'll entertain a motion on that, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the new hires as presented in non-public.
Second.
Danielle Thompson for the second. Anything for discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And that passes six zero zero. Okay. Thank you. And before I adjourn, Deb Ford, a business administrator, has some information she wanted to share with us.
Yes, I, I meant to mention in my report that the letter to the school district budget committee is under information only in your packet. I just want to remind you that that meeting is next Monday night for their organization meeting. I don't think, most of you typically come to that, but the, the person that's on the budget committee, which is Hope. I had to look it up. Hope Stragnow is the school board rep for the budget committee and Cookie is the, the backup. So you, you should probably come to that, one of you. I wrote it down as as it was Hope. Is it you, Cookie?
I don't know. Is it me?
On the sheet, you said you would help her.
Yeah, I would. But that's up to you, Hope, if you. Okay. We'll talk after the meeting.
We can look it up, but I, I looked back and you know, we have that blank sheet that we fill in when, when you're signing up for the different subcommittees. And I had wrote and written in Hope and then Cookie underneath it. But maybe you made a different deal.
I don't know. But that's too far to remember. All right. So is there anything else before I adjourn? Okay. Seeing none. Meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-two. Thank you, everybody. And have a.